Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight, Thursday, January 6th, 2022. Call our meeting to order, and I ask that we please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, visible and with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add one thing. It'll be a brief statement about the upcoming evaluation of the town manager, and that's no discussion, just a brief statement.
Okay, and that's our annual event, correct?
The annual event, which is required to be in, start in January.
Okay.
You want to add, under new business, item G?
Sure, that will work, Andy.
Okay.
Okay, hearing no others, public comment. I would just like to make a quick statement. I would just, you know, the first of the year, I would like just to see if everyone would consider doing a moment of silence for all of our friends and neighbors who sadly have departed us over the years, members of the fire department. You know, it's, we're starting a new year, but I want to remember those who did not make it into so we could just please have a moment of silence for, for these souls who are no longer with us. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Um, this is Tiffany. Is it, I just wanted to ask if it would be allowable for me to make a comment as, speaking as a citizen, if that would be okay at this moment in the agenda?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Um, I want to make this quick. Tiffany Tealy, 626 Gilliard Street. Today is also an auspicious day. We are one year removed from when a group of individuals who stormed our nation's capital in an effort to overturn a free and fair election. I, like many people, watched it live. I was working remotely at the time and watched it live. And I think that it's important that everybody acknowledge the severity of that day, the impact it has had on our men and women who are police officers who were there that day, who were attacked, who were beaten, who really had to hold the line in the name of our democracy. I think we should honor those who unfortunately lost their lives because of that, including Officer Brian Sicknick. And I think what I want to say after reflecting on this anniversary today is that democracy is fragile, and I think that to be a citizen in America requires active citizenship. And it is my sincere hope that we can start to rebuild from the scars of a year ago and move forward in a more positive direction. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Hey, Dan, Mark Rivera?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say thank you for saying that, Tiffany. Obviously, being a police officer and watching that was one of the most horrific things I've, I've seen in my police career. And I thank you for saying that, beyond the democratic implications of that. It has a lot of human implications and what that says about how we treat each other. So I'm really glad that you said that, Tiffany. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. Moving on, our next section is our good to know. Andy, you have anything?
I do, I do. I've got a couple of things, so bear with me and I'll get right to it. So under good to know, the first item is 2021 Emergency Management of the Year nominee, Paul Bancroft. So I took it upon myself as the town manager, there was a request from Demis to submit applicants, and I felt Paul was more than worthy with the work he's been doing with us here in Hebron, also in Andover with the CERT team, and also with starting up and teaching the CERT class at the Ram High School. So I put all those qualifications together with my staff and we submitted that, and we were hoping that Paul would champion his way to the top. So unfortunately, he didn't come in number one, but I heard he ran pretty close. And I'll read a quick letter that we received back. It says, "December 17th, 2021, Mr. Tierney, Town Manager, Town of Hebron. Dear Mr. Tierney, thank you for your nomination of Paul Bancroft, Emergency Management Director for Connecticut's 2021 Emergency Management Consortium. I greatly appreciate your support of this important public servant recognition program. All the nominees are deserving of this prestigious award, but our selection committee is confronted with a difficult task for choosing a candidate from a group of truly outstanding individuals. I am pleased to announce the selection of Randy Burkhart, Fire Marshal and Emergency Management Director for the Town of Killianley as the 2021 Emergency Manager of the Year. Please extend our congratulations to Director Bancroft for his outstanding achievements and for being a 2021 Award nominee. In close, you will find a certificate of recognition for his nomination. Again, thank you for your support of our emergency management community. Sincerely, Brenda A. Bergeron, Deputy Commissioner." So, Paul, you're number one in our book, and I know I'm not alone in saying that, especially with the work that we've been doing lately, the past couple of weeks, and what's coming up. There's cold weather for us this weekend. So open up to the selectmen.
Again, I've known Paul for actually many years. I'm not even sure how many years. Back during the old days of emergency management, when it was more ham radio personnel. So he's been an inspiration in, in moving the emergency management up that next notch, up the ladder. Yeah, I thank you very much. The EMS programs that he started at Ram, just, just an inspiration. Thank you again.
Hey, Dan, Mark, may I comment too?
Of course.
Andy, thank you for nominating Paul. And Paul, as a selectman, a police officer, a citizen, you know how I feel about you. We worked very closely the past three years for some difficult times, and I know firsthand what you do to make an impact, not just on the students at Ram, which you, your, your efforts there are beyond noble, and what you do for all the citizens. You're my guy. I wish you won. You won in my heart. So hey, congratulations, Paul.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak out about Paul.
Sure.
Um, I think we're very fortunate to have someone who can deliver to the town of Hebron the services that he does. I don't think most people in town are aware of the breadth of services that a emergency management person has to get into. And it's, it's, it's a lot wider than most of us know. I heard his presentation a couple of years ago to We Are Hebron, and even being involved in the Board of Selectmen, I was amazed over all the things he has to deal with. So thank you, Paul.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Peter Casper, yeah, I, I don't know Paul very well. I just know him seeing the work that he does. And, and I, I think a true leadership is really only evident at the time of crisis. It's easy to be a leader until stuff happens, and then you really see who really truly is, is capable. And, and so I see true leadership in a very difficult area and very competent in, in the work that he does, and, and like everyone else, and expressing thankful as well to have someone of his capabilities leading us during what I consider in the last couple of years, especially a year and a half a time of crisis. So thank you very much, Paul. Again, well deserving of any recognition that you get, and number one in our book for sure.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Keep it up.
Thank you, Paul.
See you Sunday. Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman and Board of Selectmen, next, we have something I felt was appropriate. We also have with us our town planner, Patrick Gallagher. I thought it was appropriate that now the survey is out, we have a quick update and overview of the Affordable Housing Plan survey, and I think Pat would be a great person to lead us into that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks, Dan. Pat Gallagher, Town Planner. I just wanted to give everybody an update on our housing survey. We have been running it for the last several weeks, and as of this morning, we have over 630 responses, which is really great. It's really been a team effort. We have a working group established that worked with the consultant to develop the survey questions. And then we've also been really working as a team to distribute it out to citizens that they have access to the link. So we sent it out to various town email lists, publishing it in the town managers' report on a weekly basis, getting it in the River East News Bulletin. And actually, this past week, we got it sent out on the Parks and Rec email distribution list, which gave us a nice bump in responses. So the survey is really meant to get citizen input on housing needs within the community, and also their thoughts on potential strategies that can help guide both our Affordable Housing Plan, which will be completing over the next several months, as well as our Plan of Conservation and Development, which the Planning and Zoning Commission will be working on over the next two to three years. So we think this is a great opportunity to get feedback from the community that can help guide our group as we start to develop our recommendations over the coming months. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
At this point, I would say we just need to see what, you know, how the responses came back. But probably at this point, that should not be done until you actually have all the surveys. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that's Peter. Do you, how, I don't remember. We got the survey, which is great, and completed it, but how long is this, this survey going to be available?
Great question. I should have mentioned that earlier. So it has actually closing this Sunday, the ninth. So we have a couple of days left, and we'll try to get a final reminder out in tomorrow's Town Managers' Report for any folks who may not have taken it. And then we'll be working on tabulating the results, and we'll be happy to share with that with you when they're ready.
And just a follow-up question. When you set out working with this, the entity, development of the survey, what did you strive for in terms of a response rate?
Um, we didn't really go into it with a specific number, more just a strategy of how we were going to get the word out. I know we had done some surveys in the past for an incentive housing zone study, and I think we, we've surpassed that response rate for this. So I'm pleased with that.
The number will be credible. I mean, you could do 6,000, and the results will probably be pretty similar, but I didn't know what the expectation was. So thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, Patrick, I can move on.
Okay. I think we're all set. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. Next, on the agenda's appointments and resignations, and Dan, I'll turn that over to the chairman, and you can run through that. The, I think a couple of the people are on here with us as you go through the list.
Okay, our first is the Open Space Land Acquisition Appointment for Parks and Rec, and that was...
Yeah, it's Kate Wilcox. So attached is a correspondence, Parks and Recreation Commission Chair, Ken Jordan advising that Kate Wilcox be the Parks and Recreation Commission Representative to the Open Space Land Acquisition Committee.
Correct. So the motion would be to move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Kate Wilcox as the Parks and Rec Recreation Commission Representative to the Open Space Land Acquisition Committee.
And Kate is with us, I believe.
You want to say anything, Kate?
Yes, I'm here. Yeah, hi.
I'll be doing it.
I'm good. How are you?
Great. Did you want to say anything on this, or?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm looking forward to the opportunity. I've been on the Parks and Rec Commission for a few years now, and so looking forward to kind of expanding and joining the Open Space Committee.
Okay, perfect. Hearing the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Thanks for you, thank you for joining, and Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you again for stepping up to that added role, and enjoy it. Should be good.
Of course. Thank you.
You're welcome. We have a Commission on Aging appointment, and the motion is that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Diane Welch as a regular member of the Commission on Aging for a term to run until December 2025. Is Ms. Welch on, or no?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Well, she apparently, she was an alternate and moving to a regular member, so she knows what it's all about going across. Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. And we have Economic Development Commission Appointment. They moved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Michelle Nicholson to the Economic Development Commission to a term to run until December 2025. And I do not believe that Michelle is on with us either. So going across, Peter? Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. So, perfect. Next would be the Town Managers' Report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's also with some correspondence in the packet, nothing pressing, so we'll move right to the report. So the list of activities that we've been working on, of course, are the CIP requests. We're starting to work with the department heads, the schools, just for an overview before we dive into that at another meeting, where you got approximately $3 million in requests for CIP for $75,000 and over. Historically, in the budget, we normally bring about a million or just under a million dollars worth of projects forward. So hopefully this year, with sitting down and fine tuning with the department heads and the schools, I can probably shave a million off of that through the town managers' recommended list to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance. And then maybe we finally got the final approval on what items could be added to the American Rescue Funds List, came out today. So Elaine and I are going to attend a seminar next week to fully understand that, and then we'll start developing a list for you guys to peruse and decide what you think you might want to spend some of those funds on. So I think between those two things, we can get it down to where it will be palatable for the taxpayer. So a lot of work, a lot of moving parts, educating ourselves now that we finally got the, the final list from the Treasury, Federal Treasury, on what is acceptable for projects. So been working on that, working with the attorney, working with the staff. One of the things that's dominated us was these COVID testing and the state last week, kind of, we're hoping to get more tests or receive them at a time when they didn't. So everybody was scrambling to try to meet that deadline, and it didn't happen. So we took a breath, and we sat back, and we're scheduled to do this, this Sunday from 1:00 to 5:00 PM at Ram. But Saturday, there's going to be a drive-through testing with a vendor through the Chatham Health Department. That's going to start Saturday morning from 8:00 to 12:00. And Paul Bancroft and the CERT team are going to be involved in both of those. So we're going to enter from Route 85, and they're going to put the cars up through the Ram campus and try to stage as many as they can off the main drag, have it coned and serpentine them up through to try to keep some sort of calmness and keep it off the main drag. So hopefully, we have enough people. We're going to have police there. The intent for holding off to distribute Hebron's tests, as we only received 600, that would have been a really quick distribution, and I'm thinking we would have, after seeing what some of the other towns went and did, and there's no criticism towards them, they did what they thought was right, and they distributed them, and they ran out before they really got started. We're lucky enough, we were told at one point this week, we weren't going to receive any more because they gave a bunch to the schools. But as of this morning, we went up to New Britain and got another 600 kits. So we will be distributing approximately 1,200. We took some out for seniors, first responders, things of that nature. But the bulk is going to go to first come, first served, one per household, and we'll hopefully get that squared away this weekend. And then with that distribution, we're going to be handing out the N95 masks as well. And then with the allotment that went to the schools, that the schools will be sending home with children with symptoms, hopefully the community will have a lot more tests out there. So that's the goal. And I was second guessing our decision to wait, but it looked like it panned out. So once again, it was luck, it wasn't experience or knowledge. We just fared well. So hopefully, everybody else will see it that way. And we'll get into it later in the budget, but the, the rate has climbed to 22.81%. So we're going to have to talk about that. It's on the agenda as we move forward on next steps for Hebron. Some of the other towns are already mandating mask mandates throughout their cities and towns. I don't think we're there yet, but I think we need to look at possibly doing another executive order.
Andy?
Yes.
This is Peter. I just wanted to comment. I think the fact that you're doing what you're doing is awesome. So I would, I mean, anyone who criticizes that, I mean, I'd be very disappointed because it's so hard to get tested now. I mean, this proactive effort by the community to bring anything forward to help people is awesome. So I don't want to, I want to make sure we emphasize that because it's not going to be perfect, and someone is going to be at the end of the line and say they didn't. But it's great work, and you should be really proud of the work you're doing there because we're doing something as a community to help our community. So I just, I don't want to cross over that. So I just want to take a moment to, to recognize you and all the folks that are participating in that effort because I think it's, it's really, really good.
You know, Peter, thank you. I appreciate that. And I must, I must be honest, we really haven't gotten too much criticism. People just want to be in the know, and there was a lot of information that wasn't out there, and we didn't have it all ourselves. So I think we're there. We're going to do a little bit more information. We got the sign back up in the center of town. We might do another email blast or, or, you know, another quick Facebook with an update. But we've been telling a lot of people through social media and on the phones, but the staff has reported in law with myself, we really haven't got a lot of criticism. People are kind of understanding. So I just want to make sure that's clear as well.
Andy, Dan Lars, is Ram the only testing facility in the area, or are there other testing facilities? Is that information somehow out there? And I'm assuming that this is open to anyone who feels they need to get a COVID test, or could you just kind of enlighten us on, on some of those parameters?
Yeah, so you're right. There are different testing sites. Not every Chatham Health District entity or town has them, but they do have them in East Tatum, they do have them in East Hampton, they do have them in Colchester, and they do them in Hebron. I don't believe they've done them in Marlborough. I could be wrong. And then I think they possibly did something in Portland. But the Ram one is, is pretty popular. They've been having them on the weekends, and the one in Colchester is, I think they do either on a Friday or during the week. And the one prior to that at East Tatum was also done at the Municipal Conflicts on Plains Road on a weekend, I believe. So through the Chatham Health District, they normally have posted vaccines clinics or testing clinics, and they also add those to the state CDC's website where that's going to be taking place as well.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. This week, I met with Joe Courtney over at AHM. They apparently had a handler or air conditioner unit up in the attic that failed and dumped a bunch of water. So they have quite a bit of water damage. It came down through the, the walls and the ceilings in the kitchen, in the hallway, in the back room. So insurance is going to cover the damage, but they're looking for maybe some funding to try to move that. I guess this is the first time that that's happened. So they want to try to get that unit out of the attic and either get it a split and have something outside and come up along the outside of the building so it doesn't happen again. So they're looking for possible funding for, for something like that. There'll be more, more coming down the pipe as they get quotes for replacement. But like I said, the damage is covered by insurance, and they had taken it upon themselves to invite Joe Courtney. So because he was here in Hebron, I was invited over there to tour the damage with him. Been working, Mark, Mark will contest this. I've been working with the new resident trooper. The SRO seemed to have settled in and doing well. They're very busy with what's going on. And also, we met with the patrol, police, and the resident trooper and myself, moving forward to cover the shift. So that's been all worked out, and I believe we're moving forward in a positive manner to keep the town covered. So we had a couple meetings regarding that. Of course, we've been busy getting ready for storm prep. Yesterday was kind of the perfect storm with the timing of the rush hour, the, you know, the precipitation of rain. It didn't really start till, depending where you were, 6:30, 7 o'clock, and the temperatures dropped drastically. So that made for a total freeze over, whether you pre-treated or not, or had every truck stationed, you know, with 80 miles of road, and that's only one lane. So you double that, and every truck roughly takes care of 10 miles of road. So that's 20 miles for each route back and forth. Can't be everywhere at once. So state saw drastic icing, a lot of municipalities saw drastic icing. It's no, no excuse. It, it, it is what it is, and that doesn't happen that often, but it happened, and it froze over. And, you know, within a couple hours, it warmed up, and we got enough product on it to make it safe. But it was pretty hairy, as Dan stated earlier, for a couple hours, a lot of accidents, a lot of people off the road. So this event that we're prepping for tomorrow is not even similar to that. We'll be out, we pre-treated. The guys will be out early, early, early this morning when it starts, and supposedly a fast-moving storm. So we're prepared. We have a full staff, and everything that we have for snow removal is up and running. So that's good news. I don't know if there's any questions on that. Okay, and then last but not least, been working with the building committee, trying, we got the grant for the library roofs, and now we had to change direction a little bit there. So we're working to modify the RFPs and also working to get the school roofs figured out of when we're going to actually do one or each one and set that up and the funding mechanisms in what year. So we're going to try to space these out. I mean, of course, the library would be at first. That's eligible, but we're working on all three of those. So that's keeping us busy as well. And that's all.
Andy?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to let you finish, but I wanted to make a comment about the storm the other day. We were all out there, and that was the first time that Public Works drivers actually said they were fearful to drive. And as you know, we even got some trucks stuck. It was so bad, they went off the road. And I got to give them credit for, you, you probably wouldn't hear this, that the word hero used with a, with a Public Works driver, but they made some heroic efforts to make the road safe. And on East Street, there were cars just sliding back down the hill. People would get out of their cars, fall down, slide down the hill. I hadn't seen anything like this in years. So it was, it was pretty bad. We had maybe five, six accidents just right We had maybe five, six accidents just right on East Street where Meeting House Road is, that hill there. And, but what a great effort to make sure that nobody got hurt, some property damage, and some scary times, but that was a great effort by Public Works to get through this without anybody really getting seriously injured. I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you.
Our next would be the old business. That'll be our COVID update.
Yes, so we're jumping right into that. So I think it's appropriate to read what we're doing, at least for the weekend, I don't know if we have any audience out there or not. But the message that was sent out, the town of Hebron plans to distribute for free COVID-19 at-home rapid test kits and N95 masks to the Hebron residents, an effort to help curb the spread of the COVID-19. Each kit contains two tests intended for one person. Kits will be distributed at the Ram School Complex on Sunday, January 9th, 2022, starting at 1:00 p.m. and ending at 6:00 p.m. or when supplies are exhausted. Please bring proof of residence and enter the Ram complex via Route 85, Ram Road, then follow the bus lanes along the left or north side of the middle school. Test kits will be limited to one per household due to the limited supply. The primary focus is for members of the public who are symptomatic or unable to obtain a test or planning on traveling. As additional kits are obtained from the state, more distribution events will be planned. Residents of other towns should check with their town governments for local availability. So hopefully, that goes smooth. Paul and I have been working on that along with the town staff. And the troopers, we're going to have police both days, Saturday and Sunday. So that is the event for Hebron, at least as the COVID distribution goes. If there's no questions on that, I'd like to go into where we are. I stated earlier, is there any questions regarding that? No? Okay. As I stated earlier, a lot of the towns are starting to tighten up some of the restrictions, and I think it's appropriate, without going crazy or affecting the businesses too much. But now that we're back up to a 22.81% rate, infection rate, that's higher than it's been. I know there's a lot more people out in the public that have been boosted or vaccinated and boosted, but still, they're asking everybody to kind of mask up. So we've been kind of, we never dropped the mask requirement for people entering the public municipal buildings, I definitely want to keep that in place, but I think I want to, you know, step that up a little bit more with doing some things via the mail or by appointment. A lot of people just are able to walk in into some of the spaces for notaries, pistol permits, some other things where we're just subjecting the staff to, you know, possibly get infected. And then once that happens, we're going to be down and out, so we want to keep our staff able to work, we still want to, you know, main or man the buildings and our offices. And I think the safest way to do that is to step up some of the requirements or go back to what we had when it was, first came out. And then I think, and I want to bring this up because I don't, I don't operate without trying to get the blessing of the full board, but I think the board should comment or at least weigh in on going back to an emergency declaration where the chairman of the board can sign along with the town manager. What that does is, in accordance with Section 406 of the Hebron Town Charter, Andrew J. Tierney, the town manager, with the consent of Dan Larson, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, hereby declares a public emergency due to COVID-19. The emergency declaration will allow the town manager to take steps necessary to protect the residents of the town of Hebron. The town manager shall have the power to mobilize, organize, and direct the forces of the town and to call upon forces of the federal government, the state of Connecticut, and other political subdivisions. The town manager will have the authority to limit nonessential services and closure limits services provided by town departments where necessary. So in order to do that, that would have to be signed by the chairman and myself. But since I've been in this seat, I've always brought it to the full board for their comments or blessing before we do anything like that. But I think due to severity of the COVID-19 and where we are and the infection rate, I think we need to seriously give me, or the town manager, the authority to act appropriately under these conditions.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment?
Yes, please.
I think we should, I think we need to. And I think while we're doing that, we have to remember what the positivity rate is, the number of hospitalizations that are increasing. Andy does not operate in a vacuum, like we said, he always consults with you and the rest of the board. But sometimes those few minutes that it would take to reach the rest of the board can be crucial to something that needs to occur. So I think he needs to have that power, the rest of us will be informed as soon as possible, but I go along with it, this situation is increasing rapidly, the transmission rate is very, very high. So those are my thoughts.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mark Rubera, I completely support that also. So Gail, well said, let's, let's give Andy the powers and trust in Dan to make sure that between the two of them, they're doing the best things they can for the citizens of Hebron.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I completely support this as well. I think it's unfortunate because I think, you know, going almost two years of this, we'd all love to be done with the pandemic, but the pandemic isn't done with us. I guess the question I have is, if we were to go ahead and vote to do this today, do we attach a time limit to it? Is this something the selectmen can evaluate every meeting in case it's excellent news and in, you know, three weeks, we might not need this, hopefully? If someone could kind of just talk me through how that would work?
That's pretty much what we did last time, is we set it for a certain time limit, and then we would discuss it at that point to decide whether or not to continue or to close it down. I'm not a big advocate of emergency declarations. That being said, Hebron right now, for Chatham Health, has the highest positivity rate of all of the Chatham Health towns. Coming out of Israel is another variant.
Yeah.
Begins with a C, I can't remember what it is. This is what happens, you read stuff at 11:00 at night, you only retain part of it. I, and I also believe that, again, you know, these positivity rates are of those being tested. But that being said, it does make sense to do that, to go to this emergency mode, and we can bring it up, we can, we can have it on the agenda for a reauthorization, you know, once a month if you want, or every other meeting. I'm pretty open to however we want to, we want to propose this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would propose that we do it for, let's say, 60 days and put it on the meeting for that night and see what is happening then, and then determine from there what we're going to do. Before, we did it for like 90 days and then we reauthorized it. But if we do 60 days, we're covering a lot of what's occurring right now, because it's not going to end in 30 days.
Peter?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, those are good comments, Gail and Tiffany as well, because I was thinking about the, and also, and I'm fully supportive of it as well, I think Andy needs as much flexibility as you can get to manage through this. But my question also pertains to, is there anything, we talk about timing, what about expenditures? Is that something that we should be thinking about? Like, Andy, I don't know, if you could, hey, all of a sudden, the time, you decide you're going to spend a million dollars on something associated with you, this, is there any, is that the type of thing that we should think about, worrying about, or is that not relevant?
I don't, I don't believe that's relevant, at least not. I would not do that, I would come back to the board and make any major expenditure, but we have it, Donna's got it up there, exactly what the charter authorizes, so we can, we can read that if you want. So it's under Charter C. Chapter 4, Board of Selectmen, Selection 406, Public Emergencies, whenever a public emergency exists, a threat arises, an evolving threat of life, health, or property of the inhabitants of the town or property of the town, the town manager or his designee, with the consent of the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, may declare a public emergency and shall have the power to mobilize, organize, and direct the forces of the town and call upon forces of the federal government, the state of Connecticut, and other political subdivisions. The town manager or in his absence, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, may summon, marshal, deputize, or otherwise employ other persons to do whatever may be deemed necessary for the purpose of meeting the emergency. Spending to meet said public emergency shall be pursuant to Section 909 of this charter. Emergency ordinance shall be enacted pursuant to Section 407 of this charter. So I don't, I don't see us having to, it's not like we had a catastrophic storm or a major loss of property. So this is more of a pandemic, closing a department, sending people home. If the Public Works Department came infected with COVID in the middle of a storm, I would need to be able to act without the Board of Selectmen in the middle of the night. So those are just some of the scenarios that I envision, not so much financial stuff that would be outside the parameters of a normal budget.
Okay, so operational, I got it, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be different if we had a catastrophic category four hurricane and we lost a building or a school or something like that, and then I would, you know, need to still consult, but that would give me different authority on spending, but this is more of a public health crisis.
Thank you.
I was going to say, this would be very similar, or actually the exact same thing as what we did last time, which just allowed him the ability to make those decisions rather than having to try to, you know, track us down. So it'd be the exact same type of deal, really.
So the, I'm not in big favor of these either unless we have to, absolutely have to do it. So I just want to be clear for some of the new people or people that aren't used to what we're doing, it'd be more than tracking you down, we'd have to have a meeting of everybody available and vote, and that, that would be a lot harder than just getting a yea or nay by a certain individual from a phone call or a text. It would have to be, we'd have to schedule a special meeting, and I see that being cumbersome if we all of a sudden have somebody tested and it affects a whole department or prep or something like that. I would need to act immediately in the best interest of employees and the public.
Okay, I'll try to make a motion, I will welcome friendly amendments. We, the Board of Selectmen, move that we go into an emergency declaration mode due to the COVID-19 pandemic, initiating tonight, January 6th, 2022, to be 60 days from now at our first meeting in March to decide whether to continue the emergency powers for the town manager, for the safety and well-being of the town of Hebron.
Mr. Chairman, I would just suggest maybe that we reference, you know, pursuant to Section 406, Public Emergency, we maybe make a reference to that in your motion, if that makes sense, just tie it to the charter.
Sure. So to add on to that then, pursuant to Section 406, Public Emergencies of the Hebron Charter.
Thank you.
So just, just point of information, and this is, once again, just that, point of information. So the way the charter is written, the chairman has the ability, along with the town manager, to just enter into one of these. We choose to be more transparent and pretty much look for the blessing of the, of the entire board to make sure we're doing the right thing and what's in the best interest of everybody involved. So you can, you can, you can make a motion, but it's not, it's not needed, but if you want to move forward with that, that's fine too.
What's, well, what's, what's the flavor of the body?
I think if you're looking at the support of the board, then it's probably a motion is relevant, otherwise sort of RFP and we're using note for the record.
I agree. I believe we should have the motion to get it on record that we are supporting giving Andy emergency powers.
I agree with Gail. It's Mark.
Okay. So do you want someone to read that motion back, or Donna?
Well, you just read it, Dan, you just read it, Dan, so why don't we vote on it?
Okay. All in favor of the motion as stated, signify by saying aye. Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rubera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, now it looks like we skip right over to new business.
Okay.
First up, first up under new business, 9A is approved of the Connecticut State Library Fiber to the Library Internal Connection Assessment Grant. So in your packets, Donna has it, is approved the Connecticut State Library Fiber to the Library Internal Connection Assessment Grant attached, is a grant application to the Connecticut State Library Fiber to the Library Interconnection Grant Program prepared by Kevin Sullivan, the library director. This grant was provided for an assessment of the library network infrastructure and system at no cost to the town.
I'll read the motion, then we can, or actually, this is a resolution, and then we can discuss it. Be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the grant application to the Connecticut State Library Fiber to the Library Internal Connections Grant Program for the Douglas Library of Hebron and authorize Andrew J. Tierney, town manager, to apply for, accept, and receive this grant. Open it up for a discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to say that I think this is a win-win. I think it's important to point out that there are people in town whose only access to the internet is through the library, so I think anything we can do to improve through this grant would be great.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rubera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you again. I agree, it's very important to get that assessment, especially if it doesn't cost us anything. Thank you, Gail Richmond, for prodding our director to apply for that.
It looked, Tiffany used the word win-win, it just seemed to be something that was quite applicable to us. So I watch, I watch my emails from the, from the state constantly.
Good job. Next, next, Mr. Chairman, item B9, I'm sorry, 9B, approved transfer station recycling center disposal rates. So just in a nutshell, we had an increase for the disposal of tires, so Kevin's just looking to try to keep it somewhat in line with what we're paying. So it says, attached is a memo from Kevin Kelly, the Public Works Director, recommending a change to the transfer station recycling center disposal rate fee schedule due to an increase in the disposal fee charged for the town for tires, and attached is the current fee schedule. And then there is a proposed motion.
I'll read the motion, then we'll open it up. Move that in accordance with the town code, Chapter 3- Move that in accordance with the Town Code, chapter 305, Solid Waste, Article 2, Recycling, Section 305-12, Fees. The Hebron Board of Selectmen amend the fee schedule to increase the fees for tire disposal to $12 per truck tire and oversized per the attached schedule. Open it up for discussion. Anyone? The only thing I would like to say is I'm seeing and hearing where these, these haulers are having a harder and harder time getting rid of these recyclables. It's a little unnerving. You know, we're asking people to try to recycle more and more. And, you know, it's, it's a double, there's two issues. We get those people that refuse to recycle or will throw non-recyclable items, i.e., one person tried to dispose of siding in the recycling container up above to try to save the money from down below. And then, you know, finding venues to take that recyclable. So I'm not sure where the long, long-range goals are going to end up being. But, you know, hopefully, smart people in this country are going to try to figure out ways of either recycling it here rather than shipping it overseas. I don't know what the, what the answers are. Anybody else? Hearing none. Moving forward with the motion. Yes, Mark?
So I was just getting ready to say, Mark Rubera, aye. So I was a little premature, I guess.
That's okay. You can go first.
I support the, I support the answer. Okay.
Thank you. Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, aye.
So you read, we read the motion, right?
Yes, that's what I read before we did the discussion.
Okay, good job. Next, item 9C. Approved revised job description for the adult and senior service social worker. Attached is a proposed revision to the job description for the adult and senior services social worker for the second review and approval, along with a motion. So we had our, our person that was with us that did a great job, get her doctorate. And with that, I probably, as the manager should have approached her before she left us. But she, she seeked other employment for more money. And now that we're reviewing that position, it was going to be hard for us to find somebody. So we booked that. That salary up, and we changed the job description a little bit. So I hope that was not insulting to the person that left. I, that was no reflection on her. Just sometimes you're a little slow at the draw, right, Mark?
Correct, Danny. But I'm glad we have to be, we do, you said it before. We need to be competitive and retain the best people.
Yeah, I, I'd like to say something then about, about Tanya now that she's gone. I've watched, I was on the interview when we first hired her. I've seen her performance with many of the seniors. They tell me how much they loved her. Anyone I referred to her was completely satisfied with her empathy and her care. And it is a loss, but I believe this new job description has been tweaked some. And hopefully, we'll get a good pool and be able to find someone else that will step in and get off onto a good start.
Okay, well, let me read the motion, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen approved the revised job description for the adult and senior services social worker as presented. You know, and I was hoping, Gail, that you would talk about it since you're the liaison to that. On the screen now is basically the changes that were made. The cross-out is, of course, what was, and the new in blue is the revised drawing. Yeah, I, I think it's sad, it's reality, I'll just continue, I have the floor, that, you know, as a smaller community, we do not have the funds to compete for some of these positions as some of the bigger communities have. And it's, it's definitely going to be an issue as we start getting into our budget deliberations on how to retain, you know, our qualified people. It's, it's a problem that we have to face. Anybody have anything else?
I'll echo on to what you said, Dan. We need to keep the qualified people. Because the town that we all love, everyone here wants quality service. And so we need to keep those quality people to deliver that service. It's a circle. But as far as the job description goes, it's basically, it's basically been tweaked. There is nothing, there is no substantial change in the qualifications and what we want from a new candidate.
Good. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor? We're going to go backwards. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rubera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Our next section would be the National Opioid Settlement.
Yes, so, Mr. Chairman and Board, I've been getting a lot of pressure from other members from CCM. The more, the more municipalities that jump onto this and move forward, possibly the better settlement that could come out of this. So we ran it by the town attorney. We are underneath the 10,000 population. But if there is any award, we may see a monetary enhancement. So there's no downside of applying for this. And if we can help out our neighbors at the same time by applying in numbers, I think it's a good thing. So the National Opioid Settlement, the town of Hebron has registered to participate in a National Opioid Settlement. As the deadline was January 3, 2022, the town attorney has advised there is no downside to participate. Detailed information can be found at the following lists on there. Two links that you could jump on to find out more about that. The town manager is seeking the Board of Selectmen's confirmation and approval for the town of Hebron's participation, along with a proposed motion. So this, this could be a win-win, and there's no real downside to it, as the town attorney has stated. So, and I have already received, as the town manager of Hebron, some kudos, a data voice to the Board of Selectmen and myself for even actually getting involved and applying for this.
Okay, so I'm going to read the resolution. We'll open it up. Be it resolved by the Hebron Board of Selectmen to approve the town of Hebron's participation in the National Opioid Settlement and authorize Andrew J. Tierney, town manager, to sign every documents. Any discussion?
Dan, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Peter, you want to say? Yeah, just today on the, just today on the radio, we had a fentanyl overdose brought back by Narcan. Narcan is miraculous. So we're, we're not immune from these things. And it, it, sometimes it gets diluted because we've been listening to this for so long. But it's still going on at a rate that's disturbing. So anything we could do as a town, grants, whatever we could do to support people who are suffering from addiction and what that does to their families. I'm so much in support of that. I'm glad we're going forward with this, or everyone will vote to go forward with this.
Peter?
I would just echo what Mark stated, so I'm in support of it. And so, but we, at some point, if monies are awarded, we would be given some sort of parameters as to how we would have to utilize the award or how it would correlate to what we would deem to be the associated damages. And that's just, Andy, just down the road.
Yeah, I would, I would think we'd have to, you know, come up with, you know, something with the police department, AHM, the schools, things along that nature to enhance prevention or like what Mark said, possibly help out with some financial shortfalls within budgets. So that's the rationale for this. The big push was like from the towns of East Hartford, Waterbury. There's a lot of, you know, the 50 states are applying for this, this kind of money. There's a lot of money there. So through the CCM collaborative, they've been reaching out to us and say, hey, even in small towns, if you put in it, could benefit us all by numbers. So I don't see a downside to it. And I'm not 100% sure if there'll be parameters, and if they are, I'm sure it's going to be similar to what I stated.
Right, right. Okay. Yeah, no, it's an epidemic. So, yeah. Thank you.
Welcome.
I was going to say myself, I think it's a sad reality. Hebron, even for its smaller size, has had a tremendous number of opioid-related type events in town. Calls, you know, that the fire department has responded to, the police have responded to. Hebron is by no means immune from the hazards that these types of products have brought to our, to our town. You know, Mark, I'm sure has seen it at the school. I know the fire departments had numerous calls, and they're all sad. To, anybody else?
Well, just, just to put it into perspective is when we were younger and went to school, we all know somebody that either perished or died from drunk driving. I think we all could relate to one of those scenarios. In today's world, the people are dying from overdoses. You don't hear very much of the students or your classmates dying of drunk driving anymore. It's more of, of an addiction or an overdose. So it's, it's kind of changed. So we have to focus our attention and our prevention more on that now. So that was expressed to me, and it made sense to me because I really didn't have anybody. I went to high school with perish or die from an overdose, per se. But, you know, we all knew one person or two people that, you know, got killed or hurt in a drunk driving accident. But now that's not the norm. The norm is the overdose.
Well, the thing too is, and not to belabor this, but, you know, it used to be that the overdose is attributed to a certain demographic. And this is, this affects everybody. I just had an operation, and they, they prescribed me a narcotic that is on that list, and, you know, oxycodone. And I'm afraid to use it. And even the person said, as an example, the nurse, he said, we prescribe way more than pills than you need. And so if you take it, you're going to have all this extra. And she said, that's the problem. And so it affects everybody, everywhere. Econom, there's, there's no one that is, is not going to be immune from this. And so that's the part that I think, and it was education. Maybe if we do get money, that education and awareness is something that we can think about. And again, that's for another meeting. But it is, no one's immune to this, to this epidemic. So the fact that we're doing anything to lend a voice to that potentially is, you're right. You should be applauded for that. And we, and we should do what we can to bring a louder voice to this problem that affects everybody.
Okay, any other comments? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Peter?
Mark Rubera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up is, I don't know if everybody has it, but we have it on the screen. It's the revised item 9E. And what this is, is we need to special, I'm sorry, to schedule a special town meeting for February 10, 2022. And this is per the town charter. A special town meeting is necessary for the town to accept two grant awards. Because of the monetary size, anything over a certain percentage of the budget is in the charter, has to go to town meeting. So with what's going on with COVID, this is going to be a little bit challenging. So, so bear with us. We're hoping to do a virtual with a roll call. But we're, we're working through that with the town attorney and staff. But let me run down what we have thus far. So first item would be the Old Colchester Road Bridge Grant. So in order to accept that, I need to sign that to get that moving. So we figured it'd be probably appropriate to do everything at once at the town meeting instead of be confusing and try to do it at two different times. So the town of Hebron received the federal local bridge program grant and the Connecticut Department of Transportation Design Managed State Program Grant, which was approved by the Board of Selectmen for submission on February 18, 2021. At that time, the second also committed to funding the town share of the budget for the bridge project. The town match amount is $502,220, which will require Board of Finance and special town meeting approval. The town manager is requesting the funding source be determined by the Board of Finance. They verbally committed to this back in that, in that date or close or similar to that date. But we're leaving that up to them to finalize exactly where they'd appropriate that money from. So that was the one item. The second item is the Douglas Library Roof Grant. The town of Hebron received a grant in the amount of $232,666 from the Connecticut State Library Construction Grant Program for the Douglas Library Project, which was originally approved by the Board of Selectmen on August 19, 2021. Additional funding of $85,000 is required to fully fund the town of Hebron's CIP appropriation for the Douglas Library Roof Project. The suggested date for the special town meeting is Thursday, February 10, 2022, at 7:00 PM in virtual meeting format. The formal meeting call will be presented for approval, and a moderator and alternate moderator will be appointed at the January 20, 2022 Board of Selectmen's meeting. And then it goes into the resolution. So I don't know if that was clear for everybody.
Okay. Now, do we have to do each resolution as an individual standalone resolution?
Let me look, Dan. I've got resolution one, resolution two, resolution three. Donna, how would you prefer we do that? You want to do one at a time or do all three?
I believe they should be done one at a time.
Okay, then that would, what I would suggest too, but I, you know, I think it'd be cleaner that way, Dan.
Yep, works for me. Okay. Resolution one, be resolved that in accordance with the Hebron Town Charter, section nine, or chapter nine, sorry, chapter nine, section 905, the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $502,220 for the Old Colchester Road Bridge Project and move forward to the Board of Finance for their approval and submission to a special town meeting for approval. And that's it. Any discussion? Andy, if you could, just for Tiffany's edification, just try to bring her up to speed on, on that bridge and that project.
Okay, yeah. So a quick overview for everybody that's even out in the public. This is a bridge. It's on Old Colchester Road. It's right near the airline trail. It's actually adjacent to the parking area there. So the state has evaluated the bridge, and we've gotten a report backed out of it in poor condition. So it was eligible for this local bridge grant and along with the DOT design. So we felt that it's an 80/20 match. So even though it looks like the town has to put up a lot of money, if we had to pay for the whole thing, it would be a huge hit to the taxpayer. So we felt this was the way to go, and, and this bridge was eligible for this program. So we moved that forward. We applied for it, and we were, we were granted that. Now, in order to get the wheels of progress in motion, we have to commit the funding to it. And that's what we're, that's what we're doing here.
Also, I was going to say, did you want to go into the state? They did the bridge inspections, and then the last time they went, they actually, if I remember right, that's the bridge that they actually found where water was. actually found, uh, where water was, was migrating through the walls of the, of the steel liner?
Yeah, the pipe, the pipe has, it has covert corrugated steel pipe and with concrete head walls and the water has penetrated the head walls and is flowing down between the, there's two pipes and it's flowing down between the two pipes and the bottom of the corrugated metal on the, uh, stream bed is rotten. So they, it is definitely in need of replacement.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealie, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you all. Uh, resolution two, be resolved that in accordance with the Hebron Town Charter, chapter nine, section 905, the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $20,224 for the Douglas Library Roof Project and forward to the Board of Finance for their approval and submission to a special town meeting for approval. Any discussion?
Uh, hang on, hang on one minute, Dan. I, I didn't follow you. And Donna, does he have the updated one for that amount?
No.
No, he doesn't.
Okay.
No, he doesn't.
Dan, we, we had, we had to update that with an escalator because, and it pushed the project back. So we have to put an escalator of six percent a year. So I think it's a 12% increase. So the new monetary figure is 85,000.
Okay. And that's what I thought that I was reading somewheres. And I was trying to find out where. So, thank you.
You want me to help you with that?
Yeah, you know, just give, just give me the amount, uh, if you could, please.
We rounded it to make it easy. It's 85,000 even.
Okay. So I will reread the resolution. Be resolved that in accordance with the Hebron Town Charter, chapter nine, section 905, the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $85,000 for the Douglas Library Roof Project and forward to the Board of Finance for their approval and submission to a special town meeting for approval. Cross that out. Okay. Any discussion? And now we know why also the dollar difference, because of the escalator. Hearing no discussion. Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealie, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye.
And I can't wait to see that roof actually get up there and stop the leaks.
Well, that's always a good thing. Leaking roofs are not a good thing. Okay. Resolution three. Be resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen schedule a special town meeting for Thursday, February 10th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in virtual meeting format to act on, one, the acceptance of the C T D O T administered design program and federal local bridge program grants. Two, approval of a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $502,220 for the town of Hebron's Chair of the Old Colchester Road Bridge Project. Three, acceptance of the Connecticut State Library Construction Grant for the Douglas Library and Hebron Roof Project in the amount of $232,666. And then I'm going to read up here, uh, approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $85,000 to supplement already approved C I P funding for the town of Hebron's share of the Douglas Library Roof Project. Any discussion? The only, the only discussion I would have is that, uh, we will be waiting to see how this virtual meeting format is, is going to work on this. I don't know, Andy, you want to expound on that anymore or wait until we get closer to that date?
We're still working on it, but I, I'm hoping we're going to be able to prevail and do a roll call and have the, uh, registered voters identify, uh, eligible people to vote. I think if, one of the worst case scenarios, if someone wants to call per charter for a paper ballot, which I would highly doubt, but unless they're just having a strong opinion about that, then we could do a drive-through paper ballot vote in the parking lot. But I, I would hope due to, these aren't new items. These are, um, things we've been talking about for a while. Uh, the amount of money for the, the roof with the escalator, that would be the, the worst case scenario. So we want to make sure we fund the amount of money that would possibly needed. It may come in a lot cheaper than that, but we have to wait and see. And we've been in, in contact with the town attorney and we want to make sure that we follow all the state statutes. But in this case, uh, the charter kind of prevails on how to proceed. So we're still working that out. But I, I don't anticipate any problems, but once again, uncharted waters, we've really not done a lot of this, but due to the COVID, we're trying to not have people, a lot of people gathering in a, in a tight spot. If it doesn't work, I guess we could, um, ask Ram. I know Ram has a policy where they want, you know, people in there all masked as well. So we're trying to see if we can't meet the requirements of the charter and do it this way. And if it doesn't, we'll regroup.
So Andy, how many, what, how many affirmative do we need to, uh, we need 25? Am I remembering correctly?
25 is the actual number that would satisfy the charter. But, you know, but being virtual, you could have people on there without their name or, or, or caller number one or caller number two. You might have people come and go. So we're going to do a roll call. Hopefully people will bear with us and we'll get through it with 25 valid voters and, and this will hopefully shall pass and we'll move on. If not, then we'll have to regroup or do a drive-through or something different. It's the sign of the times. It's one of the hurdles we're hitting with, uh, with COVID. But time is of the essence. We need to get this done so we can start moving some of these projects forward.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealie, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you. Okay. Our next thing will be the draft agenda for our January 20th, 2022.
Dan?
Yeah.
Um, I guess this would be where, uh, no.
Oh, yes, yes.
Does it go before or after the, the draft agenda?
Well, usually your business would be after.
Okay.
Draft agenda.
So the chat, the draft agenda is for January, it's Thursday, January 20th. Tiffany, I think, I know you wanted to add something that would be appropriate at this time to suggest that.
I do. Um, I'd like, um, to have an update ready for that meeting on the Hammer Softball Field Project. Um, this is something that the organization has been working on with Parks and Rec. And, um, it's an important project. The field is in need of some improvements. Um, so I think it'd be great if, if everyone, the public and the rest of the selectmen could get an update on that on the 20th.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. So good. Chairman agrees. I talked to the Parks and Rec Director today along with the, uh, commission chairperson, uh, told him to get that stuff ready for that meeting and give us an update. So, good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, um, further discussion on Andy's avowal.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I apologize. I'm trying to get my paperwork together here all of a sudden. Um, okay. Perfect. So again, anything else that wants to get added, uh, get into the town manager's office. And we'll go from there. So now, as are any other new business? Uh, Gail, did you want to get into the town manager?
Yes. Um, I wanted to, just a statement. January is, as you all know, is when we do begin the process of Andy's avowal, which is a lot of fun under all these challenges the last couple of years. So I would like to say to start, um, I have been, as you know, we work one Republican, one Democrat. So therefore, with the loss of my other Democrat colleague, um, I spoke with Tiffany the other day and asked her if she would like to join me. And she agreed. So we will be discussing the previous forms and where we need to go from here, um, as the old forms are not going to work under the current circumstances. I changed it last year and I think I need to change it again. So I just wanted to get that statement out there so that at the next meeting, we can give you a little, the board, a little more solid information. But as everyone knows, it's, it's a lengthy process.
Yes. And I thank you for doing this Herculean project year after year. And Tiffany, welcome aboard on it.
Thank you.
We both have a sense of humor. We'll survive.
We'll be fine.
Yes.
Okay. Our next section will be our consent agenda. And move the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted. We have one set of minutes from, uh, December 2nd, 2021, a regular meeting, and then the tax refunds as listed. So since it's only one item, uh, entertain a motion to accept the, uh, consent agenda items as listed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to separate out the minutes.
Okay. Then you have found issues?
I found two items that puzzle me.
Okay.
You want me to go now?
Oh, yes, please. Yes.
Okay. Um, item six D, reappointment of panel of Hebron Police Officers. I believe that should have been item six B, uh, but the paragraph doesn't pertain to police officers. Instead it says, appoint David Rose to the Board of Assessment Appeals. So I figured out that there's a paragraph missing there. And that's important, should be noted in the record. And then I found another similar thing on, um, I guess that's nine G. It says approved supplemental appropriation for truck body replacement. And then it goes on to say that I made a motion to defer until December 16th, the meeting for January 6th. So again, I believe we have a paragraph missing. And I believe the record needs to be set straight.
You are totally correct. Would you suggest that this go back for rewrite and then have it brought back to us at our next meeting?
Yes, I would, Mr. Chairman. I believe, uh, it should be rewritten correctly going from, um, the notes, the records that were, the video that was taken so that we have two solid, or actually, it'll be four solid paragraphs that we need to approve.
I think that is a very wise and prudent decision. Uh, it's more than I think we can actually correct here.
Yeah, I, I think it needs to be taken up, yes.
Everybody concur with that? I see one head. Yes. Tiffany?
Works right.
Okay, Mark?
Yes, Dan.
Okay. So we're gonna, we're going to, uh, table the approval of the minutes of December 2nd and ask that they be rewritten, you know, to, to clarify and or correct the issues as brought up by, uh, Selectman Richmond. So we would then just have the tax refunds that we would be voting on tonight. So, uh, approve the following tax refund agenda items, uh, as listed. Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Excuse me, Dan, I missed that.
We're just, we're just voting on the tax refunds. We're going to have the minutes go back for rewrite and resubmitted to us at our next meeting.
All right. So Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealie, aye.
Uh, Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, Dale Larson, aye. Thank you. Liaison reports. I'm not sure where we are. Um, so just go across. Peter?
Okay. Um, the Parks and Rec Commission, um, just, just, if I'm, I'm just going to look at my notes here for a second. This, um, um, reelection of, of chairs, the vice chair, um, Ken continues to be elected as the chair, Eric as the vice chair, went through, uh, a series of, of updates and, um, also talked a little bit about the, um, liaison representation, because we had talked about it at a previous meeting, do they want a liaison, uh, from the Board of Selectmen to participate, uh, in their meetings. And they were in the affirmative on that. So that's something that, again, we had talked about. The, uh, I guess, uh, some discussion on the, on the budget. So they went through a number of items in preparation for, for the budget and, um, I talked about that. Still looking to, um, still had some openings, some commission openings. So we talked about that as well. My dog is a new dog and she has barked twice in four months. This is the second. Uh, I don't know why she's barking, but, um, anyway, I apologize for that. And, uh, and that's, uh, that's probably it. Just really more budget discussions and, and some openings as well that they continue to talk about. And, um, um, so that was that. And then on the, uh, Board of Finance, we, uh, I have a few things, but I'll just, I want to first, uh, and I'm going to look, sorry to do this. Diane, I think is still, okay. Diane Del, Del Rosso, a veteran of the Board of Finance, but a newly elected chair, uh, is graciously, um, asked to, to be liaison to the Board of Selectmen on the Board of Finance, taking Dave Vessi's place. So, uh, I wanted to welcome Diane. I know she's been here, uh, in the meeting. And, um, I, uh, Diane, if I, if I may, I'm assuming you're still in attendance.
No, she was there earlier.
There you are. So, um, if I know, and, and I know Tiffany, you, I, I have the indulgence of the board in, in the past in terms of my updates of, of, of Board of Finances. I'll, I'll review my notes, but I, I like to hold up just a minute or so. If, since we have a luxury of having a chair, uh, be present, uh, if, uh, she would like to comment on any of my updates or highlight or correct, uh, or anything. To make sure we have the most meaningful updates, since we do have the, uh, luxury of having, uh, uh, the chair, uh, as a representative, uh, at, at our meetings. And so, Diane, I'll just go through a few things that I recall from the last meeting that I took notes on. And then, um, I, I encourage you again, after that, if you want to weigh in or, or highlight something that I didn't do a good job highlighting or, or any corrections, I, I welcome, I welcome those. And then, and welcome, welcome aboard here, here. So there was a number of discussions regarding overdrawn amounts, accounts, and the specifics around that, and sort of rationale, so so a good job there of sort of walking through some of the details of expenditures and issues associated with overtime and some overdrawn areas, so just to get some big details shared with the group, and there were some discussions about delinquencies and what's being done there, as well as an audit update, in terms of there was, we had talked in the past about the audit having nine recommendations as a result of the previous audit, eight have been resolved, and the outstanding recommendation is being addressed with the appropriate action being taken there, so no issues there. Continue discussion, again, any thoughts about it, but the COVID, the money that we're getting, so there was, that continues to be an item that the Board of Finance is paying attention to. And so there was some discussions about that. A little bit of dialogue and new business around the reevaluation and some tax, the taxpayer concerns, and again, we've talked about that, Andy, I know you addressed that at a previous meeting, but Board of Finance was, is aware of that as well. And thinking again about how we can best support the communication of the process and any, address any concerns taxpayers have, so that was an item that was, they were continuing to discuss, as well as how they looked at their own liaison representation on the Board of Selectmen, as I mentioned, for Diane, and the Board of Ed, and Ram, and A H M, so they talked a little bit about how they can effectively be represented as liaisons without, as Gail you talked about before, we can't go to every meeting and all that of every board that's out there, so where is our time spent? Where do we have an opportunity as liaisons to add value within providing information potentially and bringing information back to our boards? And so there was some good discussion about that, and those were just some of the takeaways that I had, and Diane, was there anything you wanted to add or say to the board as I finished the Board of Finance update?
Peter, thank you. Thank you for the introduction. And thank you for such a great synopsis of what we did at our last meeting. You were wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good thing. I had to take notes. I don't take notes, I would say there were some really people in ahead on that time, but thank goodness I write some of these things down, but always very good meetings, and congratulations on your new role in the Board of Finance.
Thank you, Peter.
That's what I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mark?
Just like everyone else, the Ram Board and Ram has been struggling with all the COVID issues. As you're probably aware, you can't even went virtual. But Ram doesn't have the autonomy to go virtual, you have to follow the policy of the state board, so everybody's gone back. A new chair and vice chair have been elected to the Ram Board. Mike Morris, he's a Colonel in the Army with business experience, and everybody's excited to have his leadership there. Some key faculty members who were even vaccinated have come down with COVID, and although their symptoms aren't warranting hospitalization, it's a painful endeavor. So like, like we're discussing COVID, the Ram Board and the Ram community is very concerned about it. And I've been getting a lot of calls from parents, you know, it's just somebody that they know to talk to when it's like that, they're concerned and even expressing interest in wanting to go back virtually, but superintendent reached out and said they don't have the authority to do that. That comes from the state board event. So that concludes what I have to say.
Thank you. Tiffany?
So the open, the Open Space Land Acquisition Commission met, just a couple of quick updates. The commission discussed adding a representative from the Historical Properties Commission to the eight-member commission, which would make the total amount of the commission nine members. It was felt that adding this representative would provide the committee some historical perspective on evaluating future open space purchases and providing insight and information on existing properties. They also felt that a ninth member would help them achieve quorum, because sometimes they just barely meet quorum, so I know, Andy, I think Brian O'Connell was going to share that information with you, so I'm bringing it for discussion here. And the committee continues to evaluate properties, including a current quest to connect existing open space properties and an associated trail system to private property from Chestnut Hollow Nature Preserve, south toward Hebronell, along the Jeremy River, and they've already made an inquiry to the private landowner, and that's what I have for open space.
Good. Is, I'm just trying to ascertain, this is, these are laser reports. If that is something that warrants discussion, should that get put on or on next, next meeting to discuss the adding of a ninth body onto that board?
That would definitely take approval of the Board of Selectmen, but because this is liaison, I'll reach out to the chairman of that board and have a more of a discussion at their next meeting, and if they feel that's something the whole board wants to consider, have them send a letter to myself, and I'll add it to the agenda, would be the appropriate way.
I agree. Yep, I agree. Thank you. Thank you, Tiffany. Anything else? Okay.
My turn now? Okay. The winter storytime at the Douglas Library will be starting January eleventh and the thirteenth. If anyone is, a parent is interested, they need to contact the library to register. Tomorrow is another one of the Friday afternoon movies. Tomorrow will be featuring Passing. And Library Equity Bootcamp is starting on January eighteenth with a discussion of the book, and many of you might have seen this book being advertised, The Hate U Give. If you're interested in that, there are copies available at the main desk. And the next meeting of the Board of Trustees of the library is this coming Monday, January tenth, at seven o'clock. Commission on Aging Senior Center. We were supposed to be having a meeting yesterday, but you all know what happened at eight-thirty yesterday morning. There was no quorum, so that meeting will, is rescheduled as a special meeting for next Wednesday, January twelfth. In the meantime, the Senior Center is taking appointments for the A A R P Tax Preparation Program, which will run on Tuesday during February and March. And applications are still being taken for the Winter Heating Assistance Program, and that will go through. And the Medicare Advantage open enrollment period runs through March thirty-first. So anybody that needs any information on that must call the Senior Center. And the Hebron Board of Ed is currently meeting while we're meeting, and it's a special agenda, and the topic was budget proposals. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have nothing tonight. The Fire Department Corporation postponed their meeting from Tuesday. So at this point in time, I have nothing to report on that, and nothing to report on on historic properties. So, that's it. Anybody have anything else?
Andy hasn't stated yet? No?
Yes, thank you.
You mean as far as the W P C A? So what happened there was the superintendent ended up coming down with COVID, so he had to quarantine, so there's not really an update for this meeting, but we will continue on, and I'll have one for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. I apologize.
I just knew you'd get to go, and so.
Thank you, thank you. It's not on my list, and I don't have a mind. I left it somewhere, so if I can figure out where, it'd be great. Thank you, thank you all. Gail?
It is eight forty P M., and I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen adjourn.
I'm sorry, is there public comment?
Yeah, there's.
Yes. Yes. Got us all off base here.
All right, I'm sorry. I'm going to put myself on mute now.
Any public comment?
I don't see anybody in the queue.
No.
Okay. Thank you all. Have a safe weekend. Hopefully stay safe in the stupid snow tomorrow. Have a great weekend, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you very much.